Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's public hearing and public meeting of today, Tuesday, October 22, 2024. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance, and I'll ask our general counsel, Mark Silbermann, to call the roll.
Chair Carroll?
Here.
Vice Chair Bland?
Here.
Mr. Chapin?
Here.
Mr. Chen?
Yeah.
Mr. Chu? Mr. Ginsburg?
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Lutpe? Commissioner Masterson?
All right. Good morning and welcome again to our public hearing and public meeting of today, October 22, 2024. This meeting is being held in our public hearing room on the ninth floor of One Center Street. It is also being held via Zoom for anyone who would like to participate remotely, and it is being livestreamed on our YouTube channel if anyone would like to watch the proceedings. We'll begin this morning with an item that the Research Department is proposing for designation and for which we've already held a hearing, and we'll be having a presentation and a vote today. And then we will move to a public meeting, an item that is an application for work on a designated property. It's an amendment to a previous approval for this site. And then finally, we'll move to our public hearing agenda for new applications for work on designated properties. And with that, I will turn it over to Margaret Herman.
Good morning. Item number one is LP-2658, The Jacob Day Residence at 50 West 13th Street, Manhattan, Block 576, Lot 15. The item proposed for designation is a Greek Revival-style three-story rowhouse built in 1845, which from 1857 to 1883 was the home and business of prominent African-American businessman and abolitionist Jacob Day, and presenting today is Teri Noonan.
Built in 1845 for William B. Fash. Jacob Day, a prominent African-American caterer and property owner, purchased the house in 1857 and used it as his residence and place of business until his death in 1884. His heirs continued to own the building until 1896. Day was an advocate for abolition of slavery prior to the Civil War and for voting rights and economic opportunities for African-Americans in the second half of the 19th century. Excuse me. Excuse me. The Jacob Day Residence at 50 West 13th Street is a rare extent site that is historically, culturally significant, in particular for its connection to New York City's pre-Civil and post-Reconstruction African-American history. At the public hearing on September 10, 2024, 11 people spoke in favor of designation, including representatives from the New York Landmarks Conservancy, the Historic District Council, the Victorian Society of New York, Village Preservation and Save Harlem Now, and for individuals. No one spoke in opposition. The commission received written testimony in favor of designation from Councilmember Rivera and from a petition containing 105 campaign letters. The building is located at 50 West 13th, on 13th Street, between Fifth and Sixth Avenues, just north of the Greenwich Village Historic District. The proposed landmark site is the Tax Lot. Jacob Day was a significant figure, both as an abolitionist and a prominent businessman before the Civil War. Abolitionism was a dangerous activity for Black individuals, but despite the risk, Day was a member of the National Anti-Slavery Society, a contemporary of other distinguished abolitionists of the day, and a member of the Abyssinian Baptist Church at One Sixty-Six Waverly Place, a strong supporter of abolition and African-American civil rights that was targeted during the 1863 draft riots. Day was a successful caterer when this was one of the few profitable opportunities Black men could pursue. He was a member of the Freedmen's Bank, founded after the Civil War, as a means of improving economic prospects of African-Americans, and a member of the Caters Club, along with other Black entrepreneurs who made names for themselves during that time, eventually becoming affluent, a property owner and a property owner. Jacob Day was considered part of New York's Black elite in the 19th century, at a time when African-Americans faced substantial barriers to building wealth. He had begun to own real estate as early as 1846 through a land grant in upstate New York given by abolitionist Garrett Smith, a fellow member of the Anti-Slavery Society. He later owned property in Brooklyn and Long Island. At the time of his death in 1884, Day was worth an estimated $200,000. That equivalent today is nearly $6 million. There are very few surviving sites in Manhattan associated with the pre-Civil War abolitionist movement. Two LPC designations with this history include Two White Street, home of abolitionist Theodore S. Wright, a prominent Black minister and head of a Presbyterian church, and Lambertine Place Historic District, known for its association with the white abolitionists Abby Hopper Gibbons and James Sloan Gibbons, who escaped with their family from this site during the 1863 draft riots. The Jacob Day Residence is strongly associated with this history, as well as with the Reconstruction and post-Reconstruction eras after the Civil War. The building was built in 1845 for William B. Fash and appears on this Paris map, 1854 Paris map, on the left. At the time, there was a coveyard open to the street next to the property. The building also appears in this 1857 map on the right. At the time, in the mid-19th century, despite significant discrimination and harsh living conditions, Greenwich Village became home to many Black residents, businesses, schools, churches, and benevolent societies. The area around Minnetonka Lane and Bleecker Street, south of Washington Square, became known as Little Africa. Census records indicate that Jacob Day rented additional rooms to other African-Americans. According to the Board of Education records, prominent educator, abolitionist, and later suffragists, Sarah J. Tompkins Garnett resided at 50 West 13th Street from the 1860s to 1874. During the time she lived in the house, Tompkins Garnett was a teacher, and later in 1863, was appointed one of the first Black female principals within the New York City public school system at Colored School Number Four, a designated New York City landmark. After Jacob Day's heirs moved out of the house in 1896, the house had various owners until the 1950s. In 1859, 50 West 13th Street was renovated to create a theater in the basement, a school at the first floor, and apartments above. Among various tenants, in the middle of the 20th century, in 1968, a groundbreaking four-member Afro-American folklore troupe had a residency at the theater, performing poetry, folklore, and works by well-known Black writers such as James Woden Johnson, Gwendolyn Brooks, Leroy Jones, and Langston Hughes. From 1972 to 2020, the building was the home of the off-off-Broadway 13th Street Repertory Company, one of New York's longest-running off-off-Broadway theaters. Founded by Edith O'Hare, many well-known actors and playwrights honed their craft at the 26-seat basement theater, including Bette Midler, Barry Manilow, Chaz Palminteri, Amy Stiller, and Richard Rivas. The Jacob Day Residence is a rare extent example of 19th-century Greek Revival-style building. It retains its 19th-century form, materials, and facade configuration to the 40-year period associated with Jacob Day and his family. Commissioners, please note that in 2022, the Department of Buildings approved a multi-story enlargement on this building, which was later reduced to a one-story with a setback bulkhead. The owners have indicated that they will work with the LPC as they refine their plans. The Research Department believes that due to the building's age and connection to abolitionism and important Black history, the Jacob Day Residence merits designation, even if the permit is acted upon.
Thank you very much, Teri. Can you share any questions on this one? Oh, there's a little bit more. Okay.
Built more than 175 years ago and owned by Jacob Day and his family for nearly 40 years, 50 West 13th Street is extraordinarily significant as a rare extent rowhouse and the Revival-style building in historically and culturally significance for its connection to the prominent African-American abolitionists and civil rights activists and businessmen, and the important African-American community in Greenwich Village in the 19th century. The Research Department recommends that commission vote to designate the Jacob Day Residence as an individual landmark, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that recommendation. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Margaret or Teri? Okay. Any thoughts on this one? Would anyone like to comment? I mean, I think, you know, the Jacob Day Residence is an incredibly rare survivor of a 19th-century site that has direct links to abolitionist history, and it's also significant in that it was owned by a Black businessman who was an abolitionist, and that's even more rare in the sites that we've been able to identify and designate. And so it's an important reminder of the critical role that members of the city's Black community played in the fight for freedom and social justice locally and nationally. So I think it's an incredibly important site. I want to thank Village Preservation for requesting it and for sharing information with our Research Department. And I want to thank the Research Department for being so diligent in that research and bringing this forward and proposing it. And this proposed designation is really a reflection of our commitment to equitable representation in our designations and recognizing places of significant Black history and cultural significance. So I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything, but I do hope that we move forward with our vote today. Yes, Vice Chair Bland?
I just, I feel compelled to say that in addition to the extraordinary research that has uncovered all of the history of the early part of the house and its histories and so forth, there's this later history of the theater and its extraordinary collection of people that have performed in... Was it a 26-person theater? I mean, that's quite a small little place. But all of those people mentioned in the designation report went on to become well-known people. And so the house has these two significant histories. It's kind of a whole house, and it's a beautiful survivor intact. I did question, didn't quite understand the permit that may be out there, and do we have some control over that? I know you said that we're working with staff.
We're working closely with the owner. They do have a permit to vertically enlarge the building by a floor with a bulkhead, but they have indicated that they will work with us to reconfigure that, to make it much less visible, and as they develop their plans for the renovation and restoration of the building.
So it will come before us, then?
It would come before us.
If we designate today?
That's correct.
I guess it would anyway, because it's in a historic district, isn't it?
No, it's not in the district. Yeah. So, but if we vote to designate today, then we would officially be working with the owner, and the application would come before us. Yes, Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I want to second what Fred said and what you said, that this is a remarkable and a very important designation. And one of my favorite things about the commission's recent work is the putting together of different landmarks into these kind of packages for people to explore. And, I mean, this is a perfect addition to those, the ones about the history of abolitionism in the United States. It's such a, it's kind of what landmarking should be, which is to help people see the layers of history under the present. And in this case, like Fred said, there's really two layers that are very representative of the village's development, both as a place where an African-American could buy property, own and develop, and also a place for theater to be born. So I think it's really very important. It's super exciting that there is someone who plans on improving it and who's going to work with us to renovate it properly. It's very, very important that, you know, it's obviously in rather a sad state today. So having it restored to what it deserves would be a real boon for the city.
Yeah, absolutely. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Chapin, did you want to say something? Okay. All right, great. So I think we'll make a motion and have the vote. Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion?
Yes.
Do you have it? I think, Margaret, do you have that by any chance? I think that...
I move that Landmarks Preservation Commission designate Jacob Day Residence, 50 West 13th Street Borough, Manhattan, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set for in the designation report for LP-2658 dated October 22, 2024. I also moved that Borough, Manhattan, Tax Map, Block 576, Lot 15, be designated as its landmark site, as described in the designation report and illustrated in that attached map.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion? Mark?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Masterson?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
Yay!
Yay! Thank you!
We're now going to move to our public meeting agenda for applications for work on designated properties, and I'm going to turn it over to Corey Herala, the Director of Preservation.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. Start today's Preservation Department agenda with public meeting item number one, LPC 25-03028, an application for an amendment. This is in the borough of Staten Island, Block 891, Lot 1, 209 Flag Place, the Ernest Flag House Individual Landmark. This is an estate in 1898, altered in 1907 with Klayton-inspired details, and also there are related accessory buildings. The application is to modify window openings. The applicant will present the proposal after we open the proceedings.
We'll do that now. Commissioner Masterson, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, you may begin.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Frankel. I'm the architect and applicant for this presentation. Okay, first, I want to thank Leeann. Yep, yep. I want to thank Leeann. Okay, so on the Flag Place facade, set back under the portico, are four windows which we propose restoring to their full height as Ernst Flag originally designed. Our proposal will bring more light and air into the house and optimize the extraordinary view. We propose removing both the upper window sill and the infill below it, and installing new windows spanning the height of the original masonry opening. The windows are barely visible from Flag Place, and at that, only their top portions. Our proposed change will not be visible from the public way. In these photos, you can see the four windows. The image above is the earliest available photo of the Flag Place facade. It's pretty inconclusive regarding the portico windows, but certainly by the time the house was enlarged, as shown in the photo below, the portico windows were as they are today. Comparing the portico windows with those on the courtyard facades reveals Flag's original design intention. At the portico, the four windows have masonry infill and an upper window sill, all set back seven and a quarter inches from the surrounding mosaic rubble wall. There is no infill or second sills at the other windows. The portico windows' lower sills and the sills on the courtyard facades are five inches tall and project an inch and a half from the adjacent mosaic rubble wall. The upper sills at the portico windows have different dimensions. Each is four and five-eighths inch high and project three quarters of an inch from the infill below. Secondly, there is the shutter hardware. At the four portico windows, there are three pairs of eye hardware into which a hook would have gone, which would have attached to an operable shutter. There is one pair toward the bottom, another midway, and a third towards the top. The courtyard windows have only two pairs. Note that such hardware would have likely been set into the uncured mortar just at the time of construction. Courtyard facade, the shutter hardware is highlighted. And this is an example of a Flag mansion with its shutters and hook and eye hardware. The above drawing is the existing condition, and below is the proposed, now with the four windows in question, highlighted in blue. These are the existing conditions at windows number 25 and 26, with their three pairs of shutter hardware. Also pictured is the door in between window 26 and 27, which, as expected, is not equipped with shutter hardware. These are the existing conditions at windows 27 and 28, with their three pairs of shutter hardware. The horizontal masonry joints of the spandrel infill do not align with the surrounding mosaic rubble wall, further evidence that the spandrels are later construction. Furthermore, unlike the courtyard, where there is continuous mosaic rubble under the masonry openings, as shown in the upper image, under the portico windows, there is brick, as shown in the image below. On the courtyard facade, Flag also used masonry infill to close up an entire masonry opening. Here, too, misaligned horizontal mortar joints bear testament to Flag's redesign. At the original swim tank, demolition reveals another example of Flag rethinking masonry openings, where he originally built a segmental arch, he then redesigned them with flat lintels. On the left is the typical existing condition of the double casement window type on the facades. On the right is our proposal, our typical proposal for its replacement. This is the existing condition at the portico windows. Note, there are five panes, each 11 and 9 sixteenths of an inch high. This is our proposal for the portico windows, with the infill and upper sill removed, which lengthens the window by 21 and 3/8ths of an inch. For the new windows, we propose six panes, each 13 and 1/16th of an inch high, an inch and a half taller than the existing panes. In summary, above is the existing condition, and below is the proposed, with the four windows at the portico highlighted in blue. Our proposal restores Flag's original design, letting in more light and air. We'll change from Flag Place. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant on this? So, and as, you know, as you recall, we did previously approve altering window openings on several different facades, and we can see in this elevation drawing that if you look to the right side of the drawing, you can see some of those openings that we already approved. Any other questions? All right, then I think we can move to our discussion. And as, you know, the applicant presented, Ernest Flag designed and built this house as his own residence, but he continued to experiment with new technologies and make changes to the building. And so the windows that we're looking at today are windows that the applicant believes were originally full height, based on physical evidence in the openings, including shutter pintles and the brick infill, even although they may have been raised early on. And so I think the question for us is whether they're original or historically raised, is it appropriate to remove the masonry below and lengthen them? I would note that the masonry is relatively plain masonry, and these windows are, for those of you who know the site, the house is up on a hill, and I think that from Flag Place, these first-floor windows are largely obscured. So that may be a way to think about it, but also I think one would want to think about it in the context of the previous approval. This is an amendment to that approval, where we did approve a number of modifications to openings, and so we can think about it in that context as well, and how it, what the cumulative impact is. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Masterson, would you like to start this one?
Yeah. I first want to note that, you know, the Ernest Flag House is an individual landmark, and it is one of the most, in my mind, significant individual landmarks that we have on Staten Island. So I think that everything, every change that we consider has to be done very carefully. I know that in the initial approval that we gave, we did have quite a few window openings that we had approved, additional modifications, so this would be in addition to that. They had, the applicant has shown, apparently, proof that they were at some point full-length windows. And if that is the case, and we aren't, you know, getting rid of a lot of the stonework in the front, then I think, you know, this is something that we can certainly consider. It is in the primary facade, which is something that we should also take into account, but I'm familiar with this site, and from the street, you really don't see, especially the bottom of the windows, you know, from the street. So my feeling is that the applicant should work very closely with staff to look at the proof that before, you know, the historical openings, you know, were full-length, and that the replacement window kind of matches what we have with historic proof. And if they do that, and the staff feel comfortable, I think that I can find it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with what Auntie just said.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I think there's fairly good case that the windows were longer at some point, and so I think appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
I'm in agreement with all the comments.
I'm in agreement with all the comments.
All right, then Vice Chair Bland?
I'm in agreement, but I want to also say that the context for my understanding of this change is slightly different perhaps. I'm not sure I need to be proved that this was original or not to Flag. What I, what I, what I understand, particularly with Flag, but with many other great architects who created their own private realms of private residence, Taliesin, many, many, many other come to mind. These were laboratories for experiment and were constantly changing. Not to put myself in that category, but I know that I do the same thing in my own house. Changing it all the time. So within that spirit, I think this is appropriate. If Flag didn't do it, maybe he did, maybe he didn't. It seems like maybe he did. But if he didn't, I still think it's an acceptable minor change, which is not visible from the public way, but certainly does not just detract in any way from my appreciation of an extraordinary, an extraordinarily important house in Staten Island. So I, I think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, we, you know, always hesitate to make any changes to individual landmark, particularly on the front facade. I think in this case, I agree with other commissioners' remarks and because we have previously approved certain changes, I think that these changes comport with them and may or may not be part of the original, not the original intent, but the later on intent of the architect. And also not visible from a public way due to the wall and foliage. I think it is acceptable in this case.
All right. So I think we can do an approval with modifications that they continue to work with the staff to refine the window details. Commissioner Master, would you be comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay, great.
In the matter of LPC dash twenty-five dash zero three oh two eight, two oh nine Flag Place, Ernest Flag House, an individual landmark, an estate including a Dutch colonial revival style mansion designed by Ernest Flag and built in eighteen ninety-eight, altered in nineteen oh seven with Palladian inspired details and related accessory buildings. Application is to modify window openings. I note that the architect Ernest Flag designed and built this as his own residence and continually added to the massing experimented with new technologies and altered the style and appearance of the mansion between its original construction in eighteen ninety-eight through completion in nineteen seventeen. I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work will occur on the street. Said. Okay. The physical evidence uncovered at the building may indicate that these four openings were full height at some point in the building's lifetime and were later infilled to raise the sill. But I also recommend that the applicant work with staff on the details of the replacement windows to match historic dimensions and details as closely as possible.
Right. And I think we also want to note that it's minimally visible or largely obscured from the public way. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion? Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed. The motion passed.
All right, that's approved. Thank you.
Right, we're going to now move to our public hearing items, starting with public hearing item number one. LPC twenty-four dash one zero six six seven, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block nineteen forty-three, lot four, three seventy-five Vanderbilt Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is a combined pair of Romanesque revival style carriage houses and the application is to modify window openings and install a garage door.
Are applicants or participating remote for this item? And so Kate, if you just want to, you have control of the screen now, I can just state your name for the record. You can just click on the screen to advance.
Great. So thank you everyone for having us. I am Kate Raggett for the record and I am the preservation consultant on this project. I'll be presenting today and I'm also joined by Max Dowd, who is part of the design team.
Hi.
So we will be here presenting three seventy-five Vanderbilt Avenue. It is located in the Clinton Hill Historic District. It's on the east side of Vanderbilt Avenue between Green and Lafayette. There we go. And so this is a current photograph of the building. As you can see, it's a two-story former carriage house with brick and sandstone detailing. And we are here today because we are proposing some alterations to a previously altered opening on the southern or kind of right side of the building. And so just a little bit of context for, for this particular building. So Vanderbilt Avenue has long been a service street and to some of serving the great and kind of grand mansions and homes along Clinton Avenue. And so in that, this image on the screen, Vanderbilt is the avenue running on the bottom part of the screen and Clinton Avenue is running on, on the top of the screen. And so the relationship between the two was that a lot of larger homes and mansions were located along Clinton Street. And then Vanderbilt served as, as the street where there were carriage houses. And so what you can see on this fire insurance map is that the carriage houses or garages are outlined in dark red. And then three seventy-five Vanderbilt Avenue is outlined in kind of this thicker bright red in the middle of the screen. And so you can see how this avenue, this carriage house was one of many along, excuse me, along this stretch of Vanderbilt. And so I think, you know, just to give a little bit more color to the building, many of these carriages, carriage houses, you know, were located on lots that were adjacent to the mansions or the grand homes that they were, they were serving. And that was very much the case for three seventy-five Vanderbilt Avenue. It was constructed in eighteen ninety-three for the owner of three seventy-two Clinton Avenue. And so you can see this kind of L-shaped lot here on the fire insurance map. And the image on the top right shows the, what was previously the, the location of the primary home for the owners of the carriage house. The owner was Samuel A. Wood. He was a local merchant involved in the shipping business. And you can see actually that, I want to clarify a couple of things, both that were in the designation report that unfortunately weren't quite correct. And even actually what was noted in the agenda item for this building, which stated that this was two separate carriage houses that were built at the same time. And, and that is not in fact the case. These were instead really built as a single carriage house with a garage on one side. And that's what you see in the bottom right here. You see it says coach house with concrete floor. And then the other portion of the same carriage house was a stable and that's designated as the X in this, in this floor planner, in this fire insurance map. The upper floors, as was common in these carriage houses that had two stories, the upper floor was designed to house the family chauffeur. And we actually see in census records that the Wood family had their chauffeur and his family living in that building into the nineteen forties. But by the nineteen fifties, it appears that the whole building was actually used as a residence. When we look at the nineteen eighty-one Clinton Hill Designation Report, this is really all that we have. It's a pretty limited couple of sentence description. And as I mentioned, it not only stated that this was combined into one building, but it was designed as a pair. And I, as I just mentioned, that was not the case. It also was incorrect in that it stated that the building originally had a second, a second, a second arched opening on the right. And I'll get to show you that photo in a second. The other piece that's missing in this is also just a brief discussion of the architect, who was James Mumford Jr. He worked a lot in this area of Brooklyn in the eighteen eighties, eighteen nineties and designed several other smaller scale projects. I think one of his biggest project was the Episcopal, Methodist Episcopal Church and Park Slope. And so this is just showing the kind of the original facade, which I mentioned, you know, we know did not originally have that, that second symmetrical arched opening. Really, the building has always been asymmetrical. And what we had originally, as you can see in the tax photograph, is that we, moving from kind of north to south or left to right in this historic image, we have a window, the arched opening that would allow the carriage and the horse to come into the building. Then we have a single door, a window, another door, and then a window. And so what would happen is the carriage, the carriage house and the horse would come into the arched opening. They would leave the carriage there and then there would be an interior sliding metal door that would be opened and closed and the horse would be brought from the the arched opening area over to the right into their stable area. And you can see in the historic photo on the right, the southernmost window on the second floor was a lower window with a lower sill that was used as a hayloft. We know that by the nineteen eighties, you know, this, this arrangement on the right side of the building, the small window, the second door, and then another window was altered into what we basically see today. And you can see that both in the designation photo and then in the nineteen eighties tax photo. We do also just want to, you know, state that the idea of asymmetry in these carriage houses was really typical. You know, carriage houses were kind of somewhat front of house and somewhat in between a back of house. They were designed, but really designed around functionality. And so they might have retained some of their residential characteristics or detailing, but their designs often reflected asymmetries to accommodate whatever program they were serving. And in this case, it was the carriage and the stable, sorry, the carriage house and the stable. And so these are just a few, oops, a few examples in historic districts, both, you know, up and down Vanderbilt Avenue and then also in Manhattan that showcase, you know, how typical it was to have at least some degree of asymmetry in carriage houses. So we know also that the asymmetrical facade was altered in the early nineteen seventies. In nineteen seventy-one, drawings were submitted to the DOB, which altered the original window door window pattern into what we have today, which is kind of two long windows on either side of a more taller horizontal window. We know also that there are no windows on the south side of the building on the party wall. And so this window really kind of serves to bring light into this former stable area. And so this is an elevation depicting, you know, more or less the original facade versus what we are looking at today. And so you can see the original arched opening had a by a swinging garage door made out of wood. Then we had the original entry door, the two windows that flank this second door that we, was then altered, as I have mentioned, to the window configuration that we see today. So the primary scope of work that we are proposing is to install a new garage door, which I'll get into a little bit more to, and then really the main scope of work is to is to enlarge or I guess adapt the existing altered opening on the south side of the building on the right here. And so what we are proposing is to actually reduce the size of the opening and install a new fixed window in its place. The fixed window is tripartite in pattern, which kind of harkens back to the idea that there were three openings that originally existed in this general area. We've also aligned the windows to the projecting pier and the windows above so that it kind of fits in a little bit better. And then we've also brought in some of the detailing from the openings that were originally there. And so you'll see that the projecting sandstone lintel that is located on the original window on the far north side is a similar detail to what we are looking to achieve at this in adapted opening. And so just to look at that a little bit more. So what you have on the top left is an approximation or a rendered elevation of what was there originally. On the bottom, two images is what is there presently. And on the top right is what is being proposed. And you might wonder why the team is not proposing to replicate or create an elliptical arch that is similar to the arched opening on the northern side. In this situation, the team wanted both to preserve as much fabric as possible. Because in order to create that arch, we would actually need to remove a large portion of the brickwork above the opening in order to put in the structural support for the arch. It also would have neither resolved the facade's asymmetry, nor would it have brought the building back to a previous or historic condition. And so instead, the team is really thinking about how we can make something that is sympathetic to the neighborhood, to this building typology and has developed this design, which is kind of somewhat reminiscent of of garage doors that you might see on a carriage house, but still brings in the light that this portion of the building needs. So also just talking briefly about the new garage door. So but you can see on the top left is more or less what the original or the nineteen forties tax photo garage doors looked like. And so we anticipate that they were made out of wood. We think that they also swung out. And so what we're looking to put in today is to replace the existing PVC roll-up door. We're looking to keep the existing flat panel that's located in the arch itself. And instead to install a wood door that resembles or is reminiscent of carriage house doors with the paneling and, and kind of this division through the middle that would suggest bifold, but for, for kind of functional purposes, it really does need to roll up. So that's what we're proposing. It, it kind of looks like a bifold or an open swinging door, but is really a roll-up door made out of wood. And we also, you know, are trying to bring back that original materiality of replacing, you know, the PVC door with the, a wood door. And I, I also wanted to share a couple of examples of similar approaches to this type of door where there's an arched opening with a fixed panel at the top and then typically a roll-up door in, in that opening below. And so we have some examples primarily from the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, simply because there's a lot of carriage houses that have a similar arched opening to them. But you can see that there is kind of a a language that both acknowledges the arch and also, you know, has allowed the functionality of a roll-up door to exist in this, in this opening. Oops. And so these are just some, these are just some kind of detailed sections for looking at the front window that we can talk through a little bit more specifically if anyone has questions. But what we're looking at here are two existing front window sections. So one is through the, the longer, the taller window. One is through that shorter horizontal window. And then on the right is what is being proposed. And so you can see the three panels of glazing followed by two solid panels on the bottom. And we also want to point out that, you know, we are lowering the, we're trying to retain the existing location, although may potentially not the existing, or we're looking to retain the existing steel lintel. But we are going to lower the actual location of the, the proposed jack arch. And then just a little bit finer details, looking at, you know, some of the details of the existing, you know, mulleons on the front window and then, you know, what we are proposing in detail. Okay, I think that's it.
Oops. Thank you very much. Questions, commissioners? No? Okay, let's see if we have any public testimony. And I'll note that if there's no one in the room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a couple of remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is Rosaria Sinisi. So Rosaria Sinisi, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And once you're made panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Rosaria Sinisi.
My name is Rosaria Sinisi, and I represent Citizens for Responsible Neighborhood Planning of Clinton Hill and Fort Greene. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. Landmarks Preservation Commission has received letters in opposition to this proposal from multiple local historic groups, showing a consensus that it requires further work. This is a rare case in which the 1981 Clinton Hill Landmarks Designation Report on this building was in error, as previously noted. This was not originally two carriage houses. And second, the rectangular opening on the right of the facade is not original, as shown in the 1943 tax photo of the original Romanesque Revival facade, which had only one carriage opening and two pedestrian entrances to its right. All the entrances on the ground floor were originally through doors with rounded tops, crowned with semicircular masonry detail and typical of Romanesque Revival facades of the 1870s. We believe that further alterations to this facade should be contextual with that style. That is not to say that we recommend a recreation of the original historic facade, which would not serve a 21st century use of this property. But honoring the original style of the building while not perpetuating the current non-contextual rectangular opening would be the best outcome for the building and the district. This is entirely possible while also providing the larger opening the client apparently wants. Since its presentation to Community Board Two's Land Use Committee, the applicant has added several photos showing other historic Romanesque Revival or earlier service or carriage house type buildings in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This page is titled Garage Door Precedents. But these precedents serve to highlight the fact that none of these buildings, which boast openings that may have originally hosted carriages, were designed with the origin, with a large opening that was not arched. Finally, the brick on the ground floor of this property is currently of many different textures and colors, as shown in the exhibits to our written testimony. We recommend that it should be harmonized across the lower floor of this facade with a brick matching the original brick on the second floor. We see this as an opportunity to heal an important 50-foot wide structure in the Clinton Hill Historic District and hope that the applicant, working with LPC, can achieve that result with a more contextual design. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Christina Conroy from Victorian Society, New York. Christina Conroy, I am promoting you to panelist right now. And once you've been made panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties. Okay. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, although we are pleased to see that this renovation does not disturb any historic material on the exterior of 375 Vanderbilt Avenue, we must point out that the new design is inconsistent with the original facade design shown in the 1930 tax photo, which clearly has only one carriage bay. The proposal implies that there were originally two carriage bays for carriage storage. While this is an attractive design, we would prefer to see something that recalls the original facade, which had two windows and a door to the right. There is no need to make these living room windows look like a garage door. If the full restoration of the original design does not make sense here, then we would at least like to see the history of this building, as opposed to the histories of neighboring carriage houses influence this new layout. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank, thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Michelle Arbelu. Michelle Arbelu, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Arbelu for the Historic District Council. HTC finds this proposal largely appropriate. That said, HTC agrees with the community's suggestions that an elliptical arch to match the one on the west side of the elevation, coupled with the restoration of the decorative brick key, would result in a more pleasing composition. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised for this item. So I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends conditional approval, suggesting that the applicant amends the proposed opening to reduce its size, reduce the number of mullions, and reconsider the design to better relate to the keystones, including consideration of reinstating the third keystone, which was removed in an earlier renovation. We also removed testimony, written testimony from Preserve Our Brooklyn Neighborhoods, Society for Clinton Hill, Fort Greene Association, and one other individual. And that was all shared with the commissioners beforehand. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the applicant if he'd like to respond to the testimony we've heard.
I think we are okay. I will just mention that following our presentation to the local community board, we did make adjustments to, in particular to the, I'm not controlling the screen, but maybe, okay, this is a great slide. I, we did make adjustments to the proposed design of the window opening. We did also, you know, they had suggested potentially looking at re restoring the missing kind of keystone that you see above the window, the, the door on the right. When you're looking at the, the original elevation here, we looked at that and it just, you know, did not really work for what we were doing. I think it also had just some issues with the existing structural elements that are located in that area. And, you know, we didn't want to introduce a false keystone and kind of make a suggestion of that kind of structural element when it's not really there. But overall, you know, we, we did take into consideration what some of the feedback was. We went back and refined the, the design and the location and the size of the opening and developed the design where it is today. I will also just say that to the comment about the this garage door precedent, the intent here is really about the garage door itself and not about the proposed design to the enlarged altered opening. This is really very specifically looking at garage door precedence related to our proposal for the new garage door. I don't know, Max, if there's anything else you would like to clarify too.
No, I think that's, that's great.
Okay, thank you. And there was testimony about doing an arch and if you considered that. But I think that you are working, are you working sort of with, not the same, I know you're replacing the steel lintel, but working kind of within that same location so that the brickwork above is retained?
Yeah, and I'll let, I'll let Max clarify this a bit too, if I don't get everything in there. But basically, when we, when the team looked at, you know, trying to create an arched opening in order to create an arch, it meant that, and I'm actually going to jump back to this elevation, it meant really going up very high into kind of that, that and above, into that belt course above the first floor or between the first floor and the second floor. It meant going all the way up there in order to get in the required structural framing that was needed to create an arched opening. And we, I think the team felt both like it neither recreated what was historically there, nor was it going to be kind of a positive thing in terms of the amount of existing fabric that it would end up removing. Max, feel free to add on.
That's, that's absolutely correct. Yeah, we didn't want to manufacture something that was never there in the first place and in doing so, demolish that existing brick coursing, which, you know, spans the entire length of the building.
Thank you. Any final questions, commissioners? All right, then I think we can move to our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Master. Would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed. And so we have a proposal to replace a garage door with a new, it's a PVC door, with a new wood garage door that rolls up and to modify an opening to create, to modify a, a modern opening to create a new, smaller opening for the residential use on the inside. And, you know, we've seen carriage houses many times. They are in both this district and other, particularly Brooklyn Row House districts. And they, we know that they evolved and were adapted over time for multiple types of uses, including residential uses. And so sort of nature of evolution and change is something that is evident in many of the carriage houses we see. So this was a proposal to modify this later, modern opening. Historically, it, this side of the building had three small openings. And so we'll begin our discussion. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one?
I think, had we seen a proposal to, to recreate the original, we probably could have found a way to approve that. But I don't think that was necessary. This is an adaptive reuse of a very handsome original building. I'm glad the history of it was corrected so that we now know its history a little better than, apparently. So the question is, is what's being proposed now? The, the change of a modern invention into a, the next iteration? And I think, I think the, the history has been carefully documented by, by Kate in a very articulate presentation to us. And I, I, I think that removal of brick, you know, et cetera, that she mentioned has been minimized in this, in the scheme. And I think it's perfectly appropriate, as is.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I, I think the architects have made an appropriate design decision in this situation. You know, we see obviously carriage houses adapted for reuse many, many, over, over the, you know, centuries. And I think this, you know, not doing more disturbance to the facade unless you're actually going to return to the original design and, you know, that isn't appropriate for modern use. I, I think this is appropriate. And, you know, you have the sense that this isn't what was there originally. But, you know, that's okay, because it's, it's telling you that while this seems appropriate, it's not original. So that's, I, I think, I think this is appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Bland's comments, and I could find this appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed. I, I am kind of sad that he didn't put back the hayloft tall window. That would have been an easy one, and I think it was an actually very telling detail on the old building. I think this is appropriate. I think that, I, I think the one thing that they should work carefully with staff on is the brick matching situation. The brick looks like a bit of a mess. So the selection of the right brick, the right joint size, and correction of some bad work that was done in the past is all, I think, essential when, when doing this project.
Thank you. And that, that would be a required part of our approval. Any? Commissioner Ginsburg?
And I agree with the other commissioners, appropriate. And I think there's fairly thoughtful presentation.
Commissioner Chen?
Agreed. This is such a handsome building. Wonderful to see. And I agree with Michael, just to make sure that the, the brickwork is the key. Make sure it works well with the staff and, yeah, nicely done.
All right. So I think we have a consensus to approve, Vice Chair Bland.
Good. In the manner of 375 Vanderbilt Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District, this is an application to modify windows, window openings and install a garage door. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the, that historically the carriage houses were altered, carriage houses were altered to accommodate new uses and that the ground floor of the building has been previously altered. Therefore, the proposed alterations are in keeping with that tradition of change. That the modified opening will utilize the existing steel lintel and columns. Therefore, the work will not result in the loss of additional masonry. That the proposed black finish cast stone lintel molding above the modified opening will recall similar lintels present in historic photographs and will match the finish of existing stone details on the facade. That the proposed large fixed wood window assembly with divided lights and solid lower paneling will recall the configuration, materials and details of historic carriage house doors often found on buildings of this age and type. That the proposed wood paneled garage door will recall the details of the historic garage door with carriage style details and articulation will harmonize with the proposed window assembly and will be in keeping with the typical configuration and operation of garage doors in buildings of this age, type and style found throughout the historic district and that the work will not detract from the special character, architectural character and, and historic and architectural character of the buildings or the historic district. I'll further note that the applicant will work closely with our staff here to be sure that the brick is appropriate.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that?
Second.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number two, LPC 25-02798, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 243, block 41, 116 Pierpont Street and the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style row house built in 1844. The application is to replace windows.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ilya Vilnitz. I'm the architect for the project. This is 116 Pierpont Street in Brooklyn, New York. It's a part of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. Here's the site plan. It's located on the intersection of Pierpont Street and Monroe Place. This is the 1940s tax photo and the proposed elevation. The building has had one over one windows for at least 80 years. And we'd like to replace those windows with the same one over one configuration. Here is a site plan of the immediate area showing other Greek Revival buildings that have one over one windows and a few that have two over two. And the buildings in red have six over six. And we assume that because it's Greek Revival of that time period, the original configuration of the windows was six over six. Here are the photographs of those buildings that are in the immediate area that have the one over one and two over two configurations. This is a picture of the adjacent buildings. As you can see, the building is a standalone building and not part of a historic row. Some, some deep window details to show conformance with landmark standards. And here is the, the tax photo, the existing conditions and the proposed elevation. And just one other thing to note is that the homeowner has recently purchased the building and they really fell in love with the existing one over one configuration. And they'd like to maintain that to preserve the view of the Supreme Court across the street and the historic church across the street. So we hope you can approve this as presented. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
I just wanted to know why we needed to review this.
The rules only allow the staff to approve windows on the front facade that match the historic configuration in a, in a Greek Revival style building of this age. We would assume it would be six over six. So the applicant has to come to us for a different configuration, which is the one over one, which is what the building has had for a very long time, since it's evident in the tax photo and is also a change that we see in many earlier row house buildings over time. All right, any other questions? Okay, I think we have some public testimony. Judy Stanton?
Judy Stanton speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. A majority of our committee supported this application. Given that there was not a consensus, we wanted to describe our thinking in the hope that it would guide the commission's deliberations. We noted the prevalence of one over one windows on Greek revival row houses in the immediate vicinity, many of which appear from photographs to date back to at least the 1920s, if not earlier. As a result, many of us thought that there is a good case to be made that one over ones have become a historic window type for this house, but the claim to authenticity is equally valid as the presumed original six over six windows. We also noted that this house is not part of a row. And so retaining one over ones here would not stick out in a side by side comparison. Some also think that mountain dimensions of contemporary manufactured six over six windows cannot achieve the original look. Others believe that the amount of time during which one over one windows have existed on this house, even if 100 years, is not enough to support the conclusion that they are an appropriate match to a Greek revival facade. Moreover, some thought restoring to a completely original facade style would more accurately reflect the variety between original and an altered Greek revival houses that exist nearby. Whatever is the outcome of today's deliberation, we urge the commission to take a case by case approach to these window replacements rather than adopting a blanket originalist policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't anyone else in the room to speak. I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We have a couple of remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is Michelle Arbalo. Michelle Arbalo, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Arbalo for the Historic District Council. HTC recognizes that the applicants are replacing nonhistoric windows in time. However, we believe the multi-pane divided light windows would be more appropriate for this late Greek revival slash early Italianate facade. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Christina Conroy from Victorian Society in New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, this early 1844 row house appears to be intact except for its replacement windows. It's mostly revival, Greek revival in style, but with Italianate tendencies as evident in the design of the paired front doors. Originally, this house would have had multi-sash. To respect the building's stylistic integrity, the new windows should be multi-lit. Whether these were six over six, four over four, or two over two, we can't say. But any of these would be appropriate. Perhaps further research will determine which is most correct. The one over one configuration, which has been in place for a long time. We don't seem to have any significant alteration to be protected. Once the existing windows are removed, they have no grandfathered status. Multi-wood windows should be required. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And I believe that's all we have for testimony. So I will also note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Thank you. So would you like to respond to the testimony? We've heard some support for the one over one and we've heard others say, recommend multi-light. And I don't know if you want to make any final statement on that.
Just want to reiterate the points we made during the presentation that it's, you know, essentially has been there for over 80 years. It's essentially at this point a historic condition and a big part of the neighborhood. And I hope we can take into consideration the homeowners' desires as well. Their strong desires to maintain the one over one, to maintain the view to the adjacent neighborhood. Thank you.
And I think you did present a little bit of variety on this street. Is that right?
Yes. Yep. This is the mix of windows.
So I have a question. It looks like the new windows are insulated glass where the origi, the ones there now are single pane.
That's correct.
Is part of this upgrade for energy efficiency?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final questions? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll begin. Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, sure. And we sometimes look to see the turn of multi-lights. But I think in this case, you know, the row has, you know, seen, has a lot of one over ones and has had one over one for a long time. And I don't think it detracts from this particular building to permit the one over one. So I can approve it as presented.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yes, I agree. I'd also like to point out that it's not like a row of very similar designed houses. And so I don't think that the one over one would be out of place here. So I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Agree. Appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Likewise, yeah.
Okay, Vice Chair Bland?
Well, originalists, we are not. So I think the fact that these have been in place for 80 years on a house that is not part of a row indicates to me that it's appropriate to continue it.
All right. Thank you. So I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion?
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness for Brooklyn LPC 25-02798116 Pierpont Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic, Pierpont Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. Application is to replace windows. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the building is not part of a contiguous row of similarly designed row houses, and that there are other row houses on the block with one over one double hung windows, providing a context for this configuration. That the building has had a one over one double hung window configurations since at least the 1940s, as documented in the historic tax photo. That the new windows will feature profile brick molds in keeping with the age and style of the buildings. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum? Mr. Master?
Aye.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC 24-10821. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 252, lot 55, 41 Grolman Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a Greek revival style row house built in 1845. And the application is construct a rear yard addition and reconstruct the rear facade.
Sorry, what? Okay. Hi, Brendan Cooper, and I'm the architect for this project 41 Grolman Street. This proposal, the, the reason for the hearing is that we are proposing a rear yard two-story extension. And we are also proposing to rebuild the upper two floors of the rear wall entirely. This is on Grolman Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The star is indicating the location. Grolman Street is the cobblestone street in the heights, which is, sort of has the strongest slope in the neighborhood. So all the houses step down the block. And then this slide is showing our proposal in a nutshell. So the house, the existing axonometric drawing on the left shows the house right there in the middle of those three. You can see that it is currently, there's a white stucco on the rear facade. There is a one-story rear yard extension down at the garden level, which is fairly typical for the block. And, and, and then our proposal is on the right. And we're showing a two-story rear yard extension. In this case, it has a pitched, a slightly pitched metal roof rather than a roof deck. This is a north facade, so a roof deck isn't of any particular use in this location. It's also close to the BQE. So we decided we would stick with a, with a metal roof in this location. This is the front of the house on the left, the rear of the house on the right. You can see the rear of the house is in, in difficult condition. It's stuccoed, it's painted. The lintels and sills are brownstone. And so part of this proposal is to replace, rebuild the upper two floors of the brick wall and replace the sills and lintels with cast stone sills and lintels. You'll note that there is no brick, sort of crenellated cornice at the top of this building, nor is there one on the right. It's sort of, the block seems to sometimes have it, sometimes not. We're not sure if this was modified at some point. And lengthen, you can see the house on the right has shorter windows. Just the front of the house, historic photos. Block plan existing on the left. You can see some of the other extensions in the rear yard. This is our landmarks person looking. There's no visi, this is, sorry, existing view from the street, proposed view from the street. There's nothing visible from the street. In this case, the extension is shown there on the left. You can see the line of the original building in red. This is just a catalog of existing rear yard extensions. Ours is 41, which you can see slightly highlighted there in the middle. You can see that there are more two-story extensions in the, at the lower end of the block, less towards the top of the block, probably because the lots are undersized up the block and therefore hard to get any additional space out of. These are some views from the back of the house, looking at this particular inner garden donut space. You can see the upper left photo is showing the view out to the left. You can see the BQE passing by up above there. And then up to the right is just to have fire escapes and gardens. Existing condition block plan, again, this is a detail showing up close. We are 41. We have the existing one foot, one-story rear yard extension, which is, goes back eight foot three. And then this is our proposed, which goes back eight foot six, which you can see is in line with the other extensions that have been installed on the, on the buildings that you see there to the left. Just some sandbournes of the neighborhood. So this is an overall block plan axonometric showing the extensions. You can see there's very few on the upper part of the block towards Hick Street. And there's quite a few down towards the end of the block, towards Furman Street and the BQE. We assume that this is because there is more rear yard to allow for that sort of thing. The, yeah. That's our extension. So before and after. Rooftop plan existing and proposed. Okay, again, we're back to this axonometric, so you can just see the existing condition of the house with a one-story extension and the deck. And this is our proposed extension and the reconstruction of the rear brick wall on the second and third floor. So on the left, you'll see existing white stucco on brick facade with painted, oh, painted white lintels and sills. We are proposing on the right that those new lintels and sills be cast brownstone, cast stone to look like brownstone. You'll see that there's a sort of funny unequal spacing of the windows in the existing condition. We're proposing to recreate that exactly. And then our extension downstairs, the two-story extension has a, is sort of a tripartite fenestration. There's a steel and glass system. We've maintained a sort of sizable masonry masses on the right, left and right side. Lead coated copper roof and a skylight there as well. And a very small deck that lets you get down into the backyard. Existing. Proposed. One thing we would note is the house on the left has a new parlor floor double wide opening where the lintel has been extended to bring those two windows together on the parlor floor and drop them down to a new full width deck. These are just some photographs of the condition of the rear wall. Conditions of the brick wall. So we're, we're proposing to replace this brick wall with a, in, in kind, with a brick wall with new, using new material. The existing wall is a common, a common bond brick wall. It is, the, the white stucco is pulling off the, the face of, you know, we can't remove the stucco without sort of losing the fired face of the brick. So we're, we're proposing to, because it's, there's nothing particularly exceptional about this brick wall and it's in bad condition. Nothing particularly architecturally exceptional about the wall and in bad shape, that it would be easier and better to actually just replace it in kind. So this is our proposed set of materials for this rear yard extension. So the two, the rear two-story extension is full depth brick on, actually on a reinforced concrete shell. This is because we're transferring our shear loads from the back wall to the, to the garden wall. And so we need that to do a lot more work. The upper wall is a, is a brick wall with cast stone sills and lintels to match the appearance of the original. Believe that's it. Sorry.
Commissioners, are there questions? This proposal? All right. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, Judy Stanton. Sorry, I have your sign in sheet.
Judy Stanton speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We support this application as presented.
And if you would like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Noting that there are no hands raised. Oh, actually, one from Rachel T. Rachel T., I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Hello, Rachel T. There seems to be some difficulties. I'm going to ask you to unmute one more time. Okay. They seem to be having an issue. So I will just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you. All right. So is there anything you'd like to say before we move to our discussion?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. So we will close the hearing and begin that discussion. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Yes, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So we'll begin our discussion. This is a proposal for a two-story rear yard addition that is in a block with some additions. And this depth and height would be consistent with those other additions in the block. It also includes reconstructing the reconstructing the top two floors, which are currently parched and don't have any particular details. They would be proposing to maintain the historic window alignments, restore cast stone to look like brownstone lintels and sills and install two over two windows to recall the historic condition. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start?
Yeah, I have a question for staff on the condition of the 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 rear wall and the brick condition. Have we taken a look at it? Are we in agreement with the applicant's assessment?
I mean, I know the applicant has investigated it. I think maybe not done as many probes as as possible, but enough to understand the underlying condition, which is there is a thick arch coating on the brick, and it's been demonstrated that what is seen behind that did damage the face of the brick. We'd expect that condition to be throughout. So while it may be possible to salvage some of those bricks or turn them, things of that nature. Just to pick up where I left. The the staff was satisfied that this was sufficiently damaged from what we could see to be in line with other cases where is been deemed appropriate to reconstruct rather than try to retain the materials. Because so much material would probably be wasted, and it's not exposed now. It's not visible from a public thoroughfare. I guess two floors just at the top.
Yeah, very well put. I think, you know, the porch wall obviously is sticking to the face of the brick. Yeah. I will still recommend that they work closely with the staff just coordinate the the condition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Yes, I I think this is appropriate and in general makes sense. And with the response on the existing of the rear wall, I think it makes sense.
Goldblum.
I agree. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Master.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin. I think Vice Chair Bland. We're all in agreement. Okay, Commissioner Chen, would you make that motion?
In the matter of LPC twenty-four dash one oh eight two three eight two one forty-one Geronimo Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The application is to construct a rear yard addition and reconstruct the rear facade. Noting the building style, scale, materials and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Broken Heights Historic District, I recommend approval. Finding that the demolition of the existing rear yard addition will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the proposed two-story rear yard addition will not be visible for any public thoroughfare and will be in keeping with the depth and the height of other rear yard additions found within the block and therefore will not overwhelm neighboring buildings or diminish the general, the central green space, that the design and materiality of the rear yard addition featuring brick cladding and metal window and door assemblies will be in keeping with the residential character of the building and other buildings in the block, that the rear facade has been heavily hatched and stripped of details and rebuilding the upper two stories in new brick will return it closer to the historic appearance and strengthen its relation to other houses in the row and that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Broken High Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Agree, aye, sorry.
Commissioner Bland. Mr. Chapin.
Aye.
Mr. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
The seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Right. Next item is public hearing item number four, LPP twenty-four dash one zero six seven zero. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block three eighty-six, lot five, one sixty-one Hoyt Street in the Borum Hill Historic District Extension. This is a second empire style house with French neo-bret style elements built between seventy to seventy-one. The application is to construct a rear yard addition, modify window openings.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Christine Harper, and I'm the architect for this project. We're here today because we're proposing a two-story addition in the Borum Hill Historic District. Our project is located at one sixty-one Hoyt Street, situated within the Borum Hill Historic District. It was designated in nineteen seventy-three, and this building is one of three houses, one fifty-nine, one sixty-one, and one sixty-three, built in eighteen seventy. According to the district's designation report, these homes share common characteristics. They're all two stories high. They feature mansard roofs, and they have two peak dormers per property. On this close-up of the front facade, you can see one sixty-one at the center of the three buildings. We would like the commission to be aware that we're working with the staff to replace the existing front windows to be two over two wood windows and to also restore the mansard roof by replacing the current asphalt shingles with historically accurate slate. These were violations from previous property owners, and our client has already set up money in escrow to address them. We're committed to restoring the front facade in a manner that aligns with the historic characteristic of the building. And our aim is to not only correct past violations, but to enhance the historical integrity of the building for the benefit of the community. We realize this is not being reviewed at this commission, but we did want to make note of this. This is a map of the historic district, and you could see one sixty-one Hoyt in the bottom left corner. This is our block plan, where you can see various additions that are color-coded. The other two-story additions are highlighted in red, and there are even some three-story additions highlighted in teal. It is worth noting that our rear addition proposal complies with all criteria to be reviewed at the staff level, except for the criteria that there are no more than fifty percent of houses on this block with additions. Currently, about thirty percent of the homes, twenty-two out of sixty-two, we believe, on the block have rear additions with five of these located in close proximity to our property. Notably, one fifty-eight Bergen, shown in orange, has recently received LPC approval for a two-story rear extension, and one fifty Bergen underwent a similar approval process in two thousand seventeen with an approved three-story stepped addition. This is a close-up of the area where you could see one sixty-one Hoyt on the left side. And we believe that this shows further precedent in the area. There are many properties in close proximity where the average depth is approximately ten feet. However, as noted, the most recent two approvals were sixteen feet and thirteen feet at one fifty and one fifty-nine Bergen. Our proposed addition is nine foot eleven in total on the first floor, and we're going to set back the second floor to a six foot eleven deep addition. We feel our proposal, our proposed horizontal extension aligns with the size and scale of these other properties. It's also worth noting that the extension will not be visible from any public street, as you can see in this slide. The the possible visibility is shown here, and it's just not visible. And here you can get a closer look at the other properties in the area, specifically one fifty Bergen, which was approved by LPC, and the upper right photo showing the three-story stepped addition. This is our plot plan for the property, and we wanted to talk a little bit about the addition at this point. The rear addition is nine foot eleven, as I mentioned, with six foot eleven at the second floor. Originally, we had proposed a nine foot eleven deep addition for the full two stories, but we amended the design to reduce the depth at the second story addition after our community board hearing and a subsequent meeting with the neighbors. This adjustment results in a lower FAR, meaning we're not fully maximizing the buildable floor area allowed by the New York City Building and Zoning Code in an effort to ensure that our addition remains contextual with the scale of the surrounding homes. It's also worth noting that the plans with the original depth had been already submitted to the Department of Buildings and have been approved, although we will go back to them after this hearing. This is section where you can see the existing rear facade with the new addition dotted in. And here is our new section with the stepped rear. Think that's pretty self-explanatory. This is a rear elevation with one sixty-one Hoyt being in the middle. As you can see, the demolition plan, the top floor of the facade will remain aligned and intact with the adjacent homes. We're maintaining the historic continuity of the three houses along the cornice line and the repetition repetitive windows. Only one window sill will be removed to allow access to the terrace that will be created with the addition. It's worth noting that we have already structurally designed this to confirm that the top floor will not be disturbed and can be remain original. Here's a rear elevation of our proposed addition. The addition will be brick on the rear. We're proposing that the sides be finished in stucco, painted a complimentary color to brick, and the lintel details will be simple solid brick pattern, and the windows themselves will be black aluminum clad wood set on limestone sills. We're also adding a simple black metal railing at the top for the terrace. On the left, you could see our proposed rendering of the property, and on the right, you could see a photo of the existing rear facade. And here are some additional views. In summary, we believe this project has satisfied the requirements of the LPC guidelines in all aspects. The proposed work will not damage or remove any significant visible architectural features. The rear addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, and the proposed design is consistent with what has been approved by LPC in the past, including the material scale and precedent on this block. We feel we've demonstrated that the design is within the zoning rights for this property and believe it is appropriately designed. We thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Two, two. First, you don't have any floor plans showing how this is working.
Okay.
It'd be good to have that. Second of all, you said the building department has approved you?
Well, that we resolved all of our objections, and the only objection remaining is the LPC. Apologize for the floor plans. We had worked with staff and I.
Commissioner Goldblum.
The question, why did you choose to go with three windows across on the on the I guess the second floor?
Um, well, we felt that it aligns with the 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 addition at the lower floor. So, you know, originally, we did have this design as a full two-story, as I had mentioned, all at one elevation. We decided to push it back. We felt we could still get the interior floor plan that we were looking for and address some of the neighbors' concerns. So that portion of the facade, when we come back to maybe this view, seems to, you know, work and align for us with the lower portion of the large opening.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move to public testimony. We may have more questions after that. All right, we're going to start with Monira Kahida. Please forgive me if I can't read the handwriting and mispronounce something.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, just state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Monira Kahida. I'm a neighbor, concerned neighbor. I am here because I oppose this project. Um, first, I wasn't prepared to say anything about one fifty Bergen Street, but I happen to live directly across the street from one fifty Bergen, and I can tell you that it's an enormous building with an enormous backyard. And we're all blessed with enormous backyards on Bergen and Wykoff. I live on Wykoff. So that the extension, the three-story extension, it didn't block and didn't make that much of an impact on the neighbors. This project, in contrast, is going to make a huge impact on the neighbors and on the road, and that's why I oppose it. And that's why I wanted to speak about two things that are usually not spoken of, I think, in landmark meetings, but it's things that are unseen. People discuss windows and doors and all of that, but I'd like to say something about the unique qualities of row houses. As I've observed in my fifty years in Borum Hill, I'd like to say that row houses offer families of diverse racial and economic backgrounds, the identical home with identical amount of space and identical features, both inside and out. And this leads to a harmony enjoyed by my neighbors. It saddens me to think that now this is threatened by the current occupants of one sixty-one. Since eighteen, I think it's once eighteen seventy-one, a hundred and fifty-four years, each successive occupant of one sixty-one has understood that they are only a short-term custodian of their house and have honored this responsibility by respecting its original design. From my rear view on Wykoff Street, I and dozens of neighbors can see the rear of Hoyt Street. All the trees and the bushes grow, growing in the backyards and the row houses in question. The ten-foot proposed extension at one sixty-one will not only overwhelm the neighboring houses' green space, but it'll disturb the rear public view of the ensemble. As it considers various proposals to this landmark structure, I hope that the Landmark Commission will begin moving forward to consider the negative effects of climate change. I'm deeply concerned that altering the integrity of these extremely small thirteen by forty houses today will lead to unforeseen consequences in the future. Climate change has made the city a lot wetter. Moisture penetrates materials easily, and if not allowed to escape by exposure to sunlight and air as the original builders intended, the brick, the mortar, the stucco, brownstone will turn to powder. I feel we have reached the point where the earlier impetus to conserve architectural features deemed worthy is no longer enough in the twenty-first century.
And I'm going to ask you to wrap up as the bell has rung.
But that's, I guess, the spirit of my proposal of my presentation.
Thank you very much. Ben Gibbard.
Hello, my name is Ben Gibbard, and my I and my family have lived at one fifty-seven Hoyt Street for the past twenty-five years. I'm opposed to the proposed extension one sixty-one Hoyt Street because it is entirely broken, we believe, for this landmark law. The east side of Hoyt Street is exceptional in its intimate size. It consists of three, as Mimi and I pointed out, three tiny, identical houses just over thirteen feet wide, plus one-of-a-kind semi-detached hubs and two tiny setback cottages equally small with front gardens, all of which would be overshadowed negatively impacted by the proposed extension. Any extension, but particularly one that is nearly ten feet deep on the first two floors and seven feet deep on the third, each over thirteen feet wide, is out of scale for this particular block and would loom over the neighboring properties in the U.S. It would interrupt the extraordinary character of the community open space. It would diminish the natural light and destroy the integrity of this historic road. It would also protrude out further than any building on the road and would be taller than three of its neighboring buildings. Despite the minor modifications that have been made to the original plan, the fact remains that this is still inappropriate in its massing, in its size, in its design, and in its materials. And it would irreversibly impact the road's character and interrupt the development. In addition to the upscale size, all houses on the road now face a three-story stucco wall as well as proposed fenestration overlooking the common interior space that will be equally out of style for context. Most importantly, there are no like extensions on our block, which is pristine and has no extensions of any kind since at least nineteen oh three, as historic maps reveal. In addition, the entire square block has less than eighteen percent of like extensions, most of which do not interrupt the donut. And this is well below the fifty percent usually required by landmarks for consideration, which is why we believe that this proposal was so particularly out of context. We also feel that the renderings as presented do not fully illustrate the impact this proposal would have, and we would ask for a site visit truly understand the unique character of the donut and how the proposed urban would destroy that historic setting. In the light of all this, we respectfully ask that LPC considers the irreversible negative architectural, historic, and communal damage such a proposal would have on an extraordinary block that has maintained its character intact for over 100 years. Thank you.
Okay. Maria Treglia? I think there's an L.
Hi, my name is Maria Treglia, and I have lived in 163 Hoyt Street for 24 years. We are a multi-ethnic family, and we fear that we will be forced out of this neighborhood if such monstrosity will be built. Sometimes with the neighbors, we joke that we can extend our arms and touch the walls of our house, which is only 13 feet wide. I am one, the one to the right of the row. If there is an extension that comes out almost 10 feet wide, they just minimize half an inch, it doesn't make a change. 13 and 10 feet are very similar. We cannot have that. We all know that these are historic homes. And for that reason, we understand that in order to be, in order to live, the privilege to live in an historic home means making do with the space we have, respect its details and layout, and preserve it for future generations. So when I feel confined in my narrow home, all I need to do is look out at the expanse of green space created by the collective harmony of the backyards in the block. However, if the rear yard of 161 were to be approved, approved, I would be staring at a 10-foot wall, which would significantly reduce the already sparse light in the interior and the privacy of the collective openness of the green space. I urge you to picture yourselves, commissioners, in a narrow home 13-by-40 with an additional 10-foot wall. You would feel like being prisoned in your own home. Mind you, my neighbors are extending downstairs. The downstairs is not a cellar. It's a garden floor, as they themselves have advertised it as a rental. So they're going to have four floors, and they have over 2,000 square feet of space. And if they want to extend, maybe they can extend up, but they cannot and should not, and it's not ethical to infringe and imprison their own, their own neighbors. The drawings unfortunately do not represent, do not render a, the impact, do not render how much, how far that 10-foot wall will protrude out.
I'm terribly sorry. If you could please sum up your testimony, the three minutes have expired.
So I ask myself, what is the purpose of setting a precedent that will deprive future generations, like my daughter, to live equitably in an historic landmark block? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Angela Treglia?
I am Maria's sister, so I live on 163 Hoyt Street. And I am one of the area people who signed the petition to oppose the proposed extension in our neighborhood. This extension will encroach on the donut hall, the open space of the contiguous backyards, and will impact the neighbors' views, light, privacy, noise, and air pollution. Our property, which is a pristine block with no extensions, will be shaded. The sunlight coming into the windows will be limited. The magnificent open view will be obstructed. We will be trapped between two walls, one on the left side and the existing one on the right. The views of the open space we have now will be replaced with a barrier, a wall. The immediate neighbors will experience privacy issues. From the planned terrace, one would overlook right into the windows of my sister's bedroom. This is an invasion of privacy. Noise and air pollution can significantly impact the quality of life for residents. Excessive noise and loss of natural light can have a significant impact on the well-being and mental health of residents. It can disrupt sleep patterns, increase stress levels, and affect overall quality of life. Maintaining privacy and a pleasant living environment is crucial for the well-being and happiness of the residents. The proposed project doesn't align with the existing surroundings and threatens the heritage value of the area. I believe that by preserving the area's character, we can help maintain its unique identity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emmanuel Tsarnas?
Good morning. My name is Emmanuel Tsarnas. I live at 164 Hoyt Street, across the street from the three subject houses, with my wife for the last 39 years. In the subject townhouses across the street, we have known eight different families who lived in the three little houses over those 39 years. In each case, the family started as a newlywed couple and ended up living there for many years as their families grew to include one to three children. Though they could have afforded it, these neighbors, all professionals, chose to respect and preserve the integrity of the three 19th century homes. To substantively alter the character of these closely linked buildings after 175 years, however you count it, seems very wrong to us. My wife and I urge the committee to go beyond the technical aspects and consider the impact to the historical nature of the block and immediate neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Rifkin?
Good morning. I just want to thank you for allowing us the chance to speak to you today in opposition of this proposal. My name's Brian Rifkin, and I live at 165 Hoyt Street with my family. I'm here to not only show my support for the overwhelming opinions of my friends and neighbors who will be negatively affected by the extent of this proposed construction, but to relay how this renovation would drastically impact my own property and my family. Currently, my five-year-old twin daughters, my wife and I, rely on a small corridor, open sky to provide natural light to our yard, a yard that is set back significantly from the sidewalk and nestled between two larger structures to the right of that proposed plan and considering. A significant portion of all the natural light entering our home and yard comes directly through the backyards of our neighbors on Hoyt Street. The proposed addition to this petition is building will undoubtedly block a significant portion of this light, leaving whatever open space we have in additional shadows. I fear that with this alteration, my kids will no longer enjoy our yard with the benefit of what is already a minimal amount of direct natural sunlight. I ask that you please acknowledge the negative impact that this plan would have on the surrounding homes and disapprove this current proposal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Drake?
Hello, everyone. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Sarah Drake. I'm an architect who is a friend of one of the people that you've heard from already at 161 Hoyt Street. And they asked me to give my reflection on this. First, many have already said what I would say myself, that the, I want to emphasize that the particular scale of this proposed alteration is one of those times when the rear of the house is as important as the front of the house in creating an assembly of three very narrow, smaller, much smaller than usual scale, very, and intact buildings. So to take the center building and to extend it would change its massing permanently in a very drastic way. I wanted to point out that the precedence for altering, for changing your own rule of not more than if, of requiring 50% extensions, when actually there are 14% full-width extensions, two of which were built or approved post-designation, one of which has not been built yet. The, the sun travels parallel to those extensions. The one that was built at 150 Bergen was an infill between two other protruding buildings. So there is no precedent really for this particular condition where the orientation of the extension is at 90 degrees to the sun. So when they say that it will block sun, it will. When they say it will block views and the, and the experience of the rear yard for many people, including the immediate neighbors, it will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? All right, not seeing anyone else to speak in the room, I will turn it over to Gregory Cola to see if we have remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have one remote participant with their hand raised, that being Michelle Arbelu from the Historic District Council. Michelle Arbelu, I am going to allow you to speak now. So please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Arbelu for the Historic Districts Council. HGC finds this application largely appropriate. However, we believe the proposed additional bulk should be either reduced to one floor plus basement or simplified into a single two-floor plus basement volume. Additionally, the pattern of fenestration seems overly complex for such a modest and handsome facade. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board II recommends conditional disapproval with the following additional comments. "The committee engaged in generous discussions regarding the appropriateness of an extension, given its placement in the middle of three identically sized and shaped historic buildings, its placement and symmetry of the short side of the block, and the short depth of the three adjacent lots. Significant local opposition was registered in writing to the district office prior to the public meeting and via attendance of the same block neighbors at the meeting. The committee was unable to agree upon a recommendation of conditional approval. Conditional approval was ratified to the applicant's actively engaging with their neighbors to engage to resolve their personal and aesthetic differences. The committee was in agreement with Borum Hill Association's recommendation of formal mediation. And also, many committee members felt that the materials of the south and north side walls should be reimagined to soften the overall intrusion of the donut. Additionally, we received letters from the Borum Hill Association, as well as a petition recommending denial from 80 individuals, and three additional letters from three individuals." And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you very much. And before we turn back to the applicant to ask if they'd like to respond, I just wanted Mark to address the test, address the criterion in the rule that refers to 50% and how that applies or doesn't apply to our discussion here.
Thank you, Chair. Just so everyone's clear, that there's a number of people referenced that 50% rule, and that's a rule that really reflects the staff's ability to approve rear additions depending on the context. And when the context, existing context does not meet that rule, it comes to the commission, which is why we are reviewing today.
That's why we're reviewing this particular application. It is also why the previous application was before us. It also was, I believe, short of the 50%, and we found it to be appropriate. Okay. So it's that criteria that delegates the work to the staff is purposely more conservative than, and other applications come before us for a case-by-case review, as we will do here. So I'd like to ask the applicant if you'd like to respond to the testimony.
We're going to also hear from the owner in a moment. I, I do want to respond that there were a number of things that were stated that are not correct and that we have building department drawings and formal drawings that represent some of the inconsistencies of the interpretation. The lowest level is a cellar. If I may go back to the, please do not disrupt the proceedings. I don't know if there's any architects on the commission, or if you're familiar with the definition of a cellar. You can see that more than 50% of the lowest level is below the curb level. This renders it a cellar. Okay? So this is a two-story addition, not a three-story addition. I do want to clarify that for the committee. The materials were stated that they're inappropriate. I think that they're very appropriate. There is really nothing different about this project than other projects that have been approved. I do recognize that it is a narrow lot and that it is only three buildings together, but I also recognize that everyone that comes in front of this commission, who is a homeowner, should have the right to be heard and to be treated equally, regardless of the opposition from specific neighbors. And I was reflecting today, just on a personal note, I've been an architect for over 25 years in New York. My very first project was in the West Village. It was a building in the middle of three historic buildings exactly like this on Washington Street, a center addition that was four stories and was visible. I'm only reflecting on it to say that this is not such an unusual thing to be asking for from the commission. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? Oh, yeah.
Hi, for the record, my name is Andrew Larmen. I'm the owner with my wife of 161. I'll read the written testimony that we had sent around to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to hear what we had to say. But first, we want to thank the LPC for their time in reviewing our submission, especially the staff team that has been very generous with their time when assisting with the various iterations of our design. We have worked closely with them and our architects to satisfy the requirements laid out in the LPC Permit Guidebook, and we are focused on ensuring our addition is appropriate and similar in scale and massing to those of the broader Hoyt, Bergen, Bond, Wyckoff block. We acknowledge our project has elicited, as seen here, a greater-than-usual amount of feedback from their neighbors in the area. We understand their concern around maintaining the spirit of the historic homes on our block and have made every effort to make our addition consistent with the neighborhood and with our existing home in terms of materials and effect on significant building features. In our conversations with these neighbors following the community board meeting, these individuals were not willing to give a specific feedback on how to improve our design to make it more digestible for them. However, we still took it, their concerns, into account and voluntarily reduced the size of our addition via setback of the second story in attempt to make the design more palable, while we maintain that our original proposal was appropriate in its own right. We are optimistic that this change should be viewed positively by the commission when evaluating the project. We have spent considerable time and effort to align with LPC guidelines while also reviewing the LPC decisions in the broader Brooklyn area. We feel strongly that our proposal is comparable with the 50-plus additions that we have been approved in Brooklyn in the last two years, including over 20 in Borum Hill and the very nearby neighborhoods of Brooklyn Heights, Carroll Gardens, and Cobble Hill, in particular the approval that was just made prior to this. We are confident that the commission will view our project on its merits, similar to these prior decisions, and happy to answer any questions throughout the evaluation process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners? All right, let's close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed. And All right, the hearing is closed, and we're looking at this proposed addition at this one-of-three row houses on Hoyt Street. The applicant has shown the block plan, as we stated earlier, this is before us today because it's... the staff is not authorized to issue a permit for a rear yard addition when less than 50% of the other row houses have comparable additions. And so I think that's the main reason it's before us today. I think it does align with the other criteria for a staff-level approval. So we really are looking at the context, and as always, we do this on a case-by-case basis. And we have approved, I think the applicant represented, two three-story additions on houses on Bergen Street that are, I think, larger buildings. So that's something to think about as we consider this application as well. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
So I think I'm trying to work this through, and I'm going to be curious what other Commissioners say. In general, this is the type of addition we approve. And so the question becomes, are there special circumstances in this location that make it inappropriate? And I'm not sure. I tend to think it's appropriate. I also think it might, there may be too many windows that looking at, right, the top floor and the adjacent buildings have two windows in a row because they're fairly narrow houses, and I think that would be better. And it's also a little hard to judge the need for the depth since there were no floor plans. So I can probably approve it, but I'm curious to hear what other Commissioners say.
And would suggest window, reduction of refinement in the window configuration. Okay. Commissioner Chan?
Same for me here. The, I think the fenestration pattern may need to be modified or adjusted. I think Commissioner Ginsburg is right in that regard.
Vice Chair of Land?
Well, you know, this is the sort of thing we approve pretty regularly. But I think in this case, because of the three houses are intact with really almost no change over time, that maybe this is asking too much of this little row. And I think two things. I think the second level should be eliminated, maybe only a lower extension be added. But I think if that's true, then we've eliminated my second problem, which is the three windows. I think because these houses have two windows, that that's the appropriate continuation. But if indeed my idea has any resonance around the table as we go, it may not. Then the lower level would be redesigned to accept the notion of kind of the two-window schemes above it.
Right. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, this is the sort of thing that routinely, yes, we often would approve. And it's a very small building, so you can understand why the applicant wants to have some kind of addition here. And it seems fairly modest and appropriate as an extension. It's not visible from a public way. At the same time, it's, you know, listening to all the testimony and looking at the buildings that have not seen any addition for all this time, it seems like a sort of unusual circumstance for us. So I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Bland that we could allow an extension, but that we should not have the extension on the second floor.
All right. Commissioner Master?
I agree with the other Commissioners that this is the type of rear yard addition that we approve on a regular basis. It's fairly modest in its depth. I agree with Commissioner Ginsburg's proposal that perhaps what we could do is on the, I guess, the third floor, maybe modify the fenestration and make it two windows rather than three in keeping, maybe aligning the two upper levels. But I do think that they should be allowed to have what I guess here is a three-story addition, you know, so the lower level that comes out a little bit more, and then what would maybe be the third floor, that they have like a more modest rear yard addition, just with the two-window fenestration pattern.
Right. Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I too agree with Mark's comments. I think that if, you know, the conditions of this particular building are not significantly different from buildings that we approve on a regular basis, other than the fact that the neighbors have come and forced to speak against it, and I think that while we always take neighbor input incredibly seriously, I don't think it would be fair to have it skew the approach we would take to this building as in and of itself, apart from merits that the building might have. It is a tiny little building, and I think that Fred's idea would be better, but I don't think that the proposal is inappropriate as it is. And while the concerns the neighbors raised about line air and stuff are all true and real, they're not factors that we ever consider. You know, the commission's made a decision that there's a balance to be struck between a person's right to develop their home and modify it with the public good of preservation of the building. And that has translated in rear yards into our allowing folks to do additions like this, even if they haven't been done before on that building or on that row within certain circumstances. And I think this meets those circumstances, so I'm okay with it. I do think that the second floor windows should remain aligned with the ones above, but I think it's an appropriate addition.
Okay. All right. So I think that this has been an interesting discussion. I want to thank the public for coming and speaking to us today. And I think where we are is that the majority of the Commissioners at the table would support this proposed addition with some refinements to the fenestration. However, we don't have six here to vote it out today because we are missing a few Commissioners. And so without that, we won't take an action today, but you're welcome to re-study the proposal. You can follow some of the suggestions made by the Commissioners present who supported it today, and we'll have you back when you're ready. And we should have also more Commissioners present at that time. All right. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is Public Hearing Item Number Five, LPC 25-01741, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Brooklyn Block 18434, 449 Pacific Street in the Boreham Hill Historic District. A Greek Revival-style row house built in the early 1850s, and this application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Sarah Jeffries, and I'm here to present our project on Pacific Street. I'm here on behalf of the owners as well, who actually live in Kenya, working for the UNs, or are not able to attend themselves. They've owned the property for 20 years and plan to move back and retire to this forever home. We are, it's in the Boreham Hill Historic District. And am I switching the slides here? Nothing's moving. I'm doing the arrows. Another trick? Okay, let me try again. Oh, there we go. Did you do that for me? No, it works now. Well, thank you for your help. So we're in the Boreham Hill Landmarks District, and you can see our townhouse is one in from the corner, 449. And what we are proposing is we are, this is the old tax photo, and the photo of the front of our building. We are going to restore the front facade to, with all-new windows, and to match the old style of the windows in the former tax photo. And then on the rear, we are going to add a two-story addition. So that's just showing the front facade, one in from the corner, and the current situation of the windows, which will be fully restored to match the old windows. I will add that the clients are passionate about making a sustainable home, so they do plan to do a passive house renovation, which will be triple-pane windows while in the historic landmark style. On, this is the current rear facade of the building. You can see the traditional three windows across the top two floors, and then the bottom two floors have been renovated, changed over time. The property is sandwiched between two other properties, both with additions, existing additions in the rear. And we are proposing to add a two-story addition to match the depths of the adjacent additions. This is the block plan, where you can see many houses and buildings on the block already have two-story additions, in a couple of instances, three-story. All the two stories are indicated with the orange color. These are photos of the surrounding neighborhood, and you can see the photo of seven and six is looking from Nevin's towards the rear of our building. So those are the various views shown. We did a mock-up for our community board and landmarks to show the two-story addition, which you can see just built with the two-by-fours and the orange netting. So the addition goes back eight feet, clearing the 30-foot rear setback, and aligns well perfectly with the neighboring two-story additions. This is a photo showing the mock-up in the rear, and it's, the two-story addition is minimally visible on the top, what I would imagine in wintertime. This mock-up was done fairly recently, so the trees are still out. But you can see just behind the trees, there's a little bit of the orange netting at the top. This is the elevation of the two-story addition we are proposing. We're keeping the three windows across the top two floors and matching the historic style with a two-over-two windows. And below are doing a glaze brick addition with a very modest, minimal design. There's the color elevation of that. The upper railings on the setback at the top are black steel railings to match the adjacent. Here's an axonometric view showing our addition sandwiched between the two adjacent additions. This, just showing the rear facades of the adjacent additions and showing the addition from above next door on both flat sides with the red outlines. This is just an example of the many additions on the block that you can see from above. And these are our plans showing the eight-foot addition in the back, on the two levels, and the terrace above on the second-level existing section, new section with the two-story addition proposed in the back. And this is just a photo montage that we did to show that our addition matching the depths of the additions on either side. And that's a view with less of the trees, showing that the upper part of the addition is minimally visible from Nevin Street. So we feel like we've done a very modest addition here that fits very beautifully with the neighbors surrounding and is within context in Boreham Hill and what we have done throughout the city on other projects. I'm happy to answer any questions that occur.
Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner Goldblum, and then Commissioner Ginsburg?
Can you go back to the rendered elevation, please?
Of the rear? This one?
Nope, keep on going.
Okay.
There was like...
Oh, the color elevation, the straight-on. Yep.
Bingo.
That one?
Okay, good.
Yep.
So are you proposing to remove all of the brick on the rear facade and put the new glazed brick the whole way?
No, just on the addition. I should add, the rear yard, it's north-facing, it's very, very dark, and the building on the other side has a full wall at the rear, so we're just trying to bring some light in.
So for the wall that's remaining on the upper floors, you're just going to paint over it?
We're going to paint over the brick? Yeah.
And the brick is now painted, or is it stucco covered right now on those floors?
It's here, I can show you. Let's get you a better photo. There. So it's sort of stucco over the brick. I mean, the one thing I have found, having done these projects before, is when we want to expose the brick, sometimes when we've tried to remove the stucco, it's been tricky. So we are open to just stuccoing, restuccoing the upper two floors.
That's your current plan?
Yeah, the upper two floors, and then have the glazed brick, excuse me, on the lower two floors.
Thanks.
And we have a sample. Do you want to show?
Yeah, we got it.
Oh, you did. Okay, great.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I understand why you want to use a light-colored brick, but why do you want to use a glazed brick?
Again, because the rear yard is just so dark, and there's a very, there's a big, big, tall wall at the back, and so just try and bring some feeling of light reflection in there.
Thank you. Commissioner Master?
On the third floor, are you moving the windows? It looks like they're kind of aligned with adjacent neighbors. I can't really tell, but then in the rendering, it looks like they're moved down.
We're not moving the windows. But I see what you're saying there. Yes, that's an inaccuracy on our part. Those are to be aligned. Or stay as are, I should say.
No more questions? There's no one in the room? Is there anybody virtually to testify?
I see one hand raised, that being Michelle Arbalo from the Historic Districts Council. Michelle Arbalo, I am allowing you to talk. Please state your name and unmute your line. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Arbalo for the Historic Districts Council. HGC finds the proposed bulk of this addition to be appropriate. However, given the addition's visibility from the street, we believe the white brick is inappropriate and draws too much attention to itself. We believe red brick is more appropriate and that the addition should be more closely, and the addition should more closely match the original material of the upper floors of the building, which is likely red. We further request that the applicant restore the upper-floor masonry to red brick, noting that the proposed stucco is likely concealing a failing brick metrics. Finally, we ask the applicant to consider adding some sort of mutton pattern to the large expanse of glass on the parlor and garden floor. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional person with their hand raised, so I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring you back to Commissioner Bland.
Thank you. Would you like to respond in any way to the testimony you've heard?
In terms of the coloration, the current building is a light gray stucco, and it has been light, and there's quite a variety of different buildings on the rear of the facade, different materials used on the brownstones. on the rear of the facade, different materials used on the brownstones and townhouses on that block, some of which are light, some are dark. Um, our clients in particular are very passionate about using a lighter color, again, due to the issue that it is north-facing and so dark in the rear. Um, and in terms of the upper floors, I can understand the, the desire to have the mulleons there and at the same time, personally, and I know my clients are very interested as well, is just sort of the mixture of old and new, and I feel like that's what makes the fabric of the city so interesting and enticing and uh, we are quite passionate and they are very, very fond of a more minimal approach on the lower floors.
Thank you. Any further questions? From the commissioners? Nope. Uh, Commissioner Master, would you uh, make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Uh, Commissioner Chen, would you second that?
Second.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Uh,
any opposed? All right, we can close the hearing and the clearing, hearing is closed. Uh, so now we're ready to uh, uh, discuss. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start it?
Sure. Um, I think it's appropriate. I think that uh, as we saw this morning, the removal of stucco on these uh, brick facades is likely to provoke problems. I do think that the uh, choice of materials is a bit blingy and uh, and, but I, I love glazed uh, brick and think it's kind of cool and uh, even though it's not the uh, expected um, material, uh, I think that the, in general, the notion of a light-colored rear facade addition is something we've, we have approved and is, is fairly commonly seen in brownstone districts. And uh, I think I'm okay with it.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
In general, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum. I would not do the glazed brick and either do a brick in that color without glazed or stucco. But it, but I don't have a super strong opinion, so if everyone else is comfortable with it, I can live with it.
Good, because we're only six. Um, Mr. Chen?
Yeah, likewise, I, I can find this appropriate. And the question is, I, I defer to the commissioners about the, the choice of the color and the
Thank you.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, thank you. I, I can pretty well approve it as presented. I think uh, the material is okay in the circumstances. I mean, it's next to a, an addition that's mostly steel and glass and, you know.
Okay. Mr. Master?
Yeah, I think um, you know, it's really minimally visible from a public thoroughfare and it's similar in height and depth to what we typically um, approve, so I, I can find it appropriate, e- even with the glazed brick.
Um, I too um, um, agree that it's minimally visible, height and um, depth is similar to the neighbor. Um, my understanding is that glazed brick used outside can be a problem uh, with water trapped behind it, but that's not our problem. Uh, might be your problem, uh, but let's hope not. Maybe uh, a technology of, of brick um, manufacturers has improved since those days when I learned my uh, the adage that I just said. Uh, so I'm, I'm fully in favor and think this is a, a, a fine addition. And I think the light brick color, I understand it because of the darkness of the condition, makes sense for the owner, so I'm an approval. So I think we have um, right?
If we have six and Mark's not in, then uh, okay, all right. Regarding four hundred and forty-nine Pacific Street in the Borum Hill Historic District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note, the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architecture and historic character of the Carroll Gardens Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant, significant architectural features at the rear facade, that only the top of the rear addition will be minimally visible through a gap in the street while on Nevin Street will be seen within the context of neighboring additions, that the proposed addition, being keeping with the depth and height of other rear yard additions found within the block and therefore will not overwhelm neighboring buildings or diminish the central green space. The block features rear facades of a variety of materials, colors and finishes, including lighter col- colors of stucco and painted brick and that the proposed off-white glazed brick cladding of the addition will harmonize with this context, that the design of the rear additions, including metal window and door assembly with heavy mulleons and solitoid ratio, proposed masonry rear facade will be in keeping with the residential scale and the character of other buildings in the block and that the work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of this historic district.
We need a second. Do we need a second? We did? Yeah, we need a second. So um, Commissioner Master, second?
Uh, second.
Mark, we call the roll.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With six in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
Right, and that's going to conclude our morning session. We're going to break now for lunch and uh, return at twelve forty. Just a couple of things to note, uh, hearing item number six was laid over uh, at the last minute yesterday, so that will not be presented today and we'll resume with public hearing item number seven. And also, uh, anyone joining on Zoom should check our website for an updated link uh, to rejoin the public hearing. Uh, due to technical issues, we'll be refreshing that link, so please do see that again on the website. Thank you.